Thank you for joining us for school safety hot topics, a deep dive look at two hot button issues today assessing and managing school threats and second issue of board meeting and administration office security. I'm Ken Trump, President of National School Safety and Security Services. Thank you for joining us. We recognize your time is important and want to make this as useful as possible with some practical information on these topics based on our 30 years of experience. I'm coming to you from Cleveland, Ohio for this session and my colleague Chuck Hibbert is with us from Cape Coral, Florida. Chuck?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for taking your time to join us today. Ken, before we get dive into our two topics today and any others that may arise, I think it's only appropriate that we express our condolences to those who lost their lives yesterday at Oxford High School in Michigan and our prayers and urging for speedy recovery for those who were injured. It's just another example of the trends that we're seeing all across the country in regards to student mental health issues and administration trying to cope with the violence and the mental health, a comprehensive approach. So again, our best wishes for everyone at Oxford High School.
For those who did not see the incident, there were three people killed, three students killed and eight people injured, students and one teacher according to the latest reports in Michigan. Chuck is going to work on monitoring. If you have questions or comments in our chat and try to keep up with that as best possible while we're both communicating on these topics and sharing today. As with any situation and any topic in school safety, this is not provided as legal advice or professional advice on specific situations. Each and every situation has to be evaluated professionally and your school district with your school council inconsistent with your policies for your school school or school district. So it's very complicated. There's not a quick fix and there's not a easy fix to any of this. We're going to talk today first section about school threats and in the school threats, we're going to look at emerging national school safety threat trends, understanding a threat continuum. Take a couple of comments on swatting and electronic threats. Look at school threat assessment teams, training and protocols, managing threats from adults. An area that has typically not been factored into a lot of school threats, threat assessment protocols based upon our experience across the country. Several years ago, we worked with a very large school district in one state that was the most rapidly growing school district and they had an excellent threat assessment model that they've been working on for years, but it had some incidents specific with adults threats, threats coming from adults to adults. And one particular case that ended up bringing us in the district. And we learned a lot from that to share as well and then communicating about threats. How do we communicate with parents in the school community when we receive these threats? And how do we address this in a reasonable balanced way where we, and I'm going to stress this, we assess and then react, not react and then assess because we are seeing a lot of situations across the country where that's just the opposite. School officials are reacting and then evaluating and assessing rather than the other way around. And a lot of that's resulting in unnecessary school closures, school pushing schools, schools back to remote learning and other knee jerk reactions that don't correspond with the level of the threat that's actually presented. Some of the trending issues of school safety today is a tunnel vision focus, of course, on active shooters. And those are important cases, but there's, there's a great deal students return to in-person learning from remote learning in a COVID pandemic context. We're seeing an unprecedented increase in aggression and violence manifesting itself in large scale fights, particularly at high schools, weapons confiscations and social media and other related threats. But the aggression, the disruptive behavior, the classroom disruptions, but the actual physical fighting rioting. In some cases, we've been monitoring where parents have actually been involved in one Midwest state, there were 40 police responded to a law that large altercation at a high school in an urban district. And a 40 year old mother was arrested with a firearm out in the parking lot. We've had parents inside schools joining in on threats and conflicts, large scale fights and or a series of fights where school administrators have chosen to for, for students back to remote learning for days and in some cases weeks. And there's a concern about that return to remote learning and school closures based on threats, particularly those that haven't been thoroughly assessed, evaluated and responded to based on the assessment. Because if we agree that remote learning is unhealthy academically, socially and emotionally, and we agree that these threats are these behaviors, these aggressive behaviors that we're seeing in fights, conflicts, a social emotional anxiety and aggression are caused by remote learning. It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to send the majority of our kids back home to remote learning into the very context that created the violence that we're seeing as a response to the violence. So we have, we think we can do better in having behavioral intervention supervision, heightened security and related preparedness measures in place, including social emotional supports for kids. We're still seeing a skewed focus on security products, equipment, physical security. One of the things that I'm still scratching my head about is why when we're having behavioral problems and concerns and safety threats with fights and aggression, the answer in some schools across the country has been put to kids in remote learning and in one case in one district here in the Midwest, they actually closed school for three to four weeks at the high school after a series of threats concerns to put in metal detectors. Chuck, could you talk a little bit about the physical security and the lean on that and what we've learned about the role of physical security?
I think physical security is extremely important in the, in a comprehensive school safety plan. However, it, physical security is a tool. And if you've listened to any of our podcasts or previous sessions, you know, we focus on the fact that and, and Ken's going to talk about litigation here, but either, neither one of us have been involved in a litigation case now, not that we have all cases come our way, but we not had one case in, in regards to the physical security failing. What we've seen is the failure of people and procedures. So again, we like physical security. It certainly is a valuable tool, but it is just that. Ken?
Oh, I've, I've worked in the highest profile school active shooter cases in the civil litigation phases and expert witness. I've worked at Sandy Hook and Parkland, San Bernardino on plaintiff and defense sides of cases along the way and others, as well as dealing with rape, sexual assault, gang related violence, all types not all, but many types of school safety litigation. And as Chuck said, while the facts and merits of every case vary, the common thread is that they involve allegations of failures of people, policy, procedures, protocols, training, et cetera, not allegations in most cases, the majority of cases not on allegations of physical security, hardware, equipment, security, technology and products did not work. So we really want to stress that because it plays a role, but it's only as good as the weakest human link behind that. And the first and best line of defense is a well-trained, highly alert staff and student body. And it's concerning particularly in a post-COVID, I won't say post, because we're not completely through there, but in emerging out of a pandemic phase back to in-person learning, we struggled before COVID to find time on the professional development agenda for school administrators, school staff, teachers, support staff, bus drivers, office support staff, custodial, food services to get time on the agenda for school districts to put the resources and the time and the emphasis on training our people. We just find that in the three decades we've been working in the field, it becomes harder and harder to find time to, for professional development on safety, security and emergency planning. And but that yet that's again, where the, when we look at the gaps in critical incident forensic analysis, that's where the allegations of failures rest. Threat assessment is certainly a focal point in board meeting and administration security. The role of police in schools is still one that's being discussed, the concerns about the school to prison pipeline. We saw number of schools, districts, larger districts in particular across the country makes a very knee jerk reaction to eliminating school-based police, school resource officers in the immediate time after the George Floyd murder. And as are many of our nation's cities, they're reversing trends after defunding school police to bring those officers back in. So we said at that time that we, that schools should exercise caution and we'll say this again is that in our assessments of school based policing models as part of our security and emergency planning assessment consultations with schools, we found that the, the issues tend to rise not on the fact that there are school-based police programs, but how those programs are designed and run according to best practices models. Now that's not our main focus here, but again, this is one of the trends and concerns we're seeing and it plays into the threats and the security because we do believe that properly run a school resource officer programs are a prevention program, not a cuff them and stuff them arrest driven model. And that plays into the overall safety and how we're managing those threats that we're seeing. And again, increased schools, security litigation. So when we look at school safety threat continuum real quickly, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. We address this in our training. If you look at the threats that face schools or the schools face, there's a very broad continuum from left to right. Here we have everything from routine discipline, if there is such a thing. Behavior, verbal aggression, physical aggression, bullying, fights. Then we start getting in and this is not an exhaustive list, but issues such as non-custodial parents, different types of threats, bomb threats, death threats, et cetera, weather, natural disasters, suicides on campus. We're seeing over the years. We've always had concerns about teen suicide, but many of those incidents have been completed off of school property and historically are now occurring actually on campus. And that's a growing area of concern. A shooting or other weapon attack in school, active shooter, single incident, multiple incidents as we saw yesterday or multiple victims as we saw yesterday in Michigan, all the way up to potential organized terrorist attack on school. These are things that Chuck and I've worked on on our team and our colleagues for decades now as different threats. So we can't just get focused on one particular threat, one particular issue bullying only or active shooters. We have to look at that whole broad threat continuum. And with that, we have to look at a prevention to preparedness continuum in terms of how we address. And we are a nation and we saw this three decades ago, plus when Chuck and I got into this field, it's, the debate is always either or, we need more social emotional programs or more physical security hardware and school police and, and emergency planning. And our position's always been, why are, why does it always have to be an or it should be an and we need prevention, intervention and security and emergency preparedness planning. The bottom line is I've always said is that the student who's walking through the back hallway to go see the counselor, school psychologist or intervention specialist at his high school is not going to benefit very much if they're assaulted, beaten and severely injured on the way to get to that intervention session. So we have to have a secure environment with reasonable security measures to have a secure environment in which to deliver those other prevention intervention academic and student supports for, for children in schools and that deals for again, on a continuum of climate and prevention, social, emotional, classroom management, intervention supports, staff training, the security hardware and, and equipment, security and police staffing, tabletop exercises, safety and, and emergency preparedness drills, lockdowns, evacuation, parent, student reunification. Up to dealing with again, a stu, a school active shooter exercises and full-scale drills. So it's a broad continuum. And as we look at the threats today, we see that those threats are with social media and texting. In particular, text messages and other social media messages, Instagram, whatever the, the communication platform is messages and rumors spread in seconds and hours, not minutes and days as they used to spread many years ago prior to social media. And if there are pictures and video, they go viral even faster. And as we navigate this platform today and Chuck's working on monitoring our, our chats and questions, we know that we know that there are many platforms developing as well. And we're seeing school threats emerge in these various social media platforms. So we got upfront on this as, as a team here at National School Safety and Security Services back in 2015. I saw this pattern of this emerging and we did a study of hundreds of school threats and about 70% involved bomb and or shooting threats at that point in time. This study is still available on our website at schoolsecurity.org. And I'll tell you why we're talking about a 2015 study today and 2021. About 66% were at high school, 18% middle school. So you can see the bulk of those impacted secondary schools, but we also saw them at individual schools, private independent schools as well as affecting not only an entire, entire school districts, but multiple school districts in some regions. The interesting part is at that point in time, about 37% of the threats were sent electronically, electronically 28% of those on from different social media platforms. And the reality and the threats in that particular study about 30% resulted in the evacuation of schools, the automatic evacuation of schools. And 10% at that time in that particular study, closed schools. Where have we come over the last six years? Very similar in that the threats tend to be more and more less of a writing on bathroom wall of a threat and more coming from social media and electronic context, electronic sources. And we still see schools prematurely, in many cases unnecessarily, and in some cases unsafely automatically evacuating without assessing and closing unnecessarily. The thing that's changed in the last couple of years, it's quite concerning to us is that with the introduction of remote learning into education today, we found that school leaders now are using remote learning as they come back into in-person learning. Remote learning is being used as a crutch, as a tool for, we got a social media threat. Let's just either send kids home today and perhaps close, or let's just have them stay home for three days until we figure out what's going on and assess the threat. And my question is, what did we do two, five, 10 years ago? We had behavioral intervention plans, heightened supervision plans. We assessed the threat and worked on developing threat assessment. We worked with our local law enforcement and we continued education the next day. And again, put using remote learning as a, as a crutch is, is concerned, particularly as we have an increased number of these threats. And then we have also swatting threats. Threats that are set oftentimes coming not only from your local schools, community, but from throughout states, across state borders, and in some cases internationally that are oftentimes computer generated threats targeting multiple schools, multiple school districts, multiple areas in an organized fashion. And some have even involved as this incident did several years ago when we first started looking at this organized swatting groups or efforts that came internationally targeting our schools. So what did we learn from that? We learned that schools need threat assessment teams, training and protocols in place. Number two, that schools leaders should have plans for heightened security while those investigations are ongoing. And that schools must have crisis communications plans and social media strategies to communicate because what happens is with rumors and misinformation spreading as quickly as they do, schools have a two-pronged threat. Number one, they have the actual threat itself to investigate and cooperation many times with law enforcement. If not most times, and while they're investigating, they have a crisis communications plan because crisis on place, a crisis of communications in place because you not only have to manage the threat, but you have parents knocking on doors, parents wanting to know what's going on. Coming to school to get their kids, rumors and misinformation. So you're managing two crises in a parallel manner, the actual threat itself and the communications crisis that comes with that. And you have to be prepared to hit the ground running. Chuck, do you have any, any observations there as we continue forward?
I think one of the things that has definitely changed is the fact that we used to talk about, well, you need to be prepared for the onrush of, I'll, I'll simply refer to them as non-students to your campus. Now, what we've learned and what has evolved is that the preparation still needs to take place, but you also need to realize that your first responders are going to be responding to the threat. And they're not going to be involved immediately with managing the non-students who will get there on the heels much quicker than we've ever seen before because of our kids having their cell phones. We've, we've certainly lost that, that battle over the years. So we're not going to talk about eliminating cell phones, but we must adjust our preparedness for the reality that as a school staff, we are going to be, it's much more important that, for example, that we have someone responsible for locking the exterior doors when we find ourselves in one of these situations. And so that hasn't changed. It's just the immediacy of the event and, and the importance of having that plan in place and people understanding their roles in regard to responding quickly. Ken?
Parents, guardians arriving on the school doorstep at the main office, calling into your office. What message do you have for your office support staff to give to those who are on the other end of the line? Those on the other end of the line may also include the media calling. We got this tip in the newsroom. What's going on? We heard that there is a shooting threat or a death threat or an incident at, at your school. It's all a buzz on social media. What can you tell us? Who should we talk to? What, where's your front office staff, support staff or school secretaries? What do you do? Are they part of your plan? Do you have a script or text or direction given to them? Written out so that they can, when I say text, I mean something in writing that they can read, that they could give so that they direct those inquiries to an appropriate place. We're going to talk a little bit more about these pieces here very quickly as we move through this. But what is threat assessment? Threat assessment is a fancy phrase. It's developed into a science today. It's researched academically with some good models that are in place, but it basically comes down to identify, assess and manage. Identification, who, what, when, where? And how, who's involved? Where did this threat originate? Who are the individuals that are involved? When is this supposed to happen? Where the basic fact gathering process, assessing that gathering and evaluating information from multiple sources. Just because there's a one particular source doesn't mean it's a credible threat, but doing the legwork, if you will, with you through your student sources and inform as if you're as administrators, investigator, school security, school police to, to further dive deeply into a threat once it's brought to your attention. And how do you manage that from a law enforcement, a disciplinary, a heightened security, a behavioral evaluation, counseling students who are threat makers who are identified with their return to school and and how does that affect school community communications? So again, this, taking a look at the assessing a threat, there, it's important to remember as you're evaluating the threats that the goal is to intervene before any type of action. And we need to look at their, their thoughts involved. There are words involved in, in threats. There are plans that are made and then their action. What step along this progression, this continuum is is the threat at once you receive it. And the general rule is that the greater the detail and specificity of the threat, the, and the greater the steps in taking planning and steps towards action, collecting the weapons, perhaps if there's a plot with weapons, identifying list of targets and individuals and specific plans, then that's a greater credibility of the threat. Chuck, do we have any comments or in the, in the chat or in the Q and A section at this point in time? I, at this, I can't quite see that section here as we have the screen share up, but if anyone has it.
Not yet, Ken, but one of the things I would like to add to what you're talking about threat assessment is that oftentimes we've seen school districts that have excellent threat assessment protocols and procedures and even teams trained in regards to using this for, for student threats. The, the common sense approach is also this threat assessment tool can be used in regards to parents, guardians or others who be may make threats to the school, use that threat assessment tool. It is a multifunctional tool that can be used in, in various situations. So just don't get locked into using your threat assessment process and your teams for students only.
Absolutely. And we're actually going to come back to that in a few minutes. We're going to spend about five more minutes on, on threats. But if you do have those, wait, this Zoom session is set up. If you do have comments or questions, if you could put those in the chat and Chuck will relay, relay those. We don't have the capability at this point to pull in different participants there, but I see one that popped up here. Our good friend and colleague, Dr. Steve Soroka, who speaks a lot about the importance of relationships and the power of one and the power of many. Steve, his comment was you guys are spot on. Thank you. And Steve is veteran educator, internationally recognized and and has some very important messages that he works on and prevention and engagement for students and staff and school communities across the country. He's been there hands-on for many years now. Thank you, Steve. One of the models that I found very interesting, my doctoral research at Johns Hopkins on strategic crisis leadership and risk and crisis communications. How do you deal with these? These unknown unknowns, those variables, these emergent threats that don't have a textbook on it. Chuck and I have gone through and received a red team thinking, training and certified in that, looking at the different types of creeping crises, as they say in one strand of research that are just different from the ones that we found before. We know a lot about active shooters, but we're dealing with a lot of unknown unknowns. And as we talk about threats, one of the Swiss cheese model was one model of, that really caught my eye. It's James Reason talks about early on and looking at different risk management and layers of defenses. If you look at the different threats and, and you look at the different holes, there are different The different threats and and you look at the different holes, there are different places that make us a higher risk there. Some holes are due to active failures, things that we have not prepared for, planned for weaknesses in our systems vulnerabilities. And then there are other holes that are due to latent conditions that are just there. But if you look at the Swiss cheese and you could, let's say we're talking about individual students who are deemed at risk, students are higher risk. And you look at when incidents occur. It's oftentimes where you get that perfect alignment of those different holes, those different gaps where a hazard, an accident or an actual. Active violence occurs. And if we can plug those holes. In the Swiss cheese, if you will, along the way through prevention efforts, through intervention efforts, through student support, social, emotional. School climate type efforts through physical security, through staff training, tabletops, emergency planning. If you can plug just some of those holes, we can reduce the risk to that perfect alignment. Of those successful layers of defenses so to to block out a potential crisis from occurring. Any type of threat does not guarantee violence and violence may happen without any warning. So just because there's a threat doesn't mean there's going to be violence, just because you don't have a threat, doesn't mean that an incident won't occur. But serious, we do know from the research and experience on threat assessment. That serious offenders may tell someone they know typically other students. And the key is getting kids to come forward. And I'll tell you the number one way we find out about weapons plots. And threats in schools is not from a metal detector, but it's from kids who come forward and tell an adult. Where there's a trusting relationship in place. That is how we learn about these threats. And we can't stress enough the importance of those relationships. We know that serious threats are typically planned, thought out and more organized than they are spur of the moment actions. And it's oftentimes a progression of deteriorating events. Perhaps untreated, undiagnosed depression or other issues. Or an end of the road problem solving in some cases where there's been a progressive deterioration of events. Problem solving in the eyes of the shooter, the violent actor. Which all of this tells us that there is an opportunity to prevent, there is an opportunity to intervene. And the better trained we are, the more we do tabletop exercises, the more we do potential scenarios. There's a growing body of research I've been looking into for my doctoral program about intervening. And early recognition and based on the actual training, actual experience and exercises. And Chuck and I will tell you that one of the things that we value greatly is the tabletop exercise and we'll talk about that in in a second. Just to kind of, again, we're giving hours of training here, just covering some key areas. Be sure to record and document threats. And then what do you do with that data? We worked with a large school district, very large school district, a fast growing school district that had good threat assessment model. But their growing number of schools added to the district each year due to rapid population growth in the county. The threat assessment protocols and were still on paper forms. They had someone in district office monitoring in addition to a dish, regular duties, other duties. But there is no computerization, the threat forms were various dates and various stages of update. Across the district as we had been interviewed building principals. And that data was coming back in in numbers over a period of time, but it wasn't close to real time. And it also wasn't being analyzed. So are we collecting the data on threats? What type of form or format do we have? Is that electronic versus hard print? How is that information shared from kids who are progressed from an elementary level to a middle school to a high school within the same district? So there's some continuity of this information. Who's analyzing this data? And and how how is this collected on a district wide basis and analyzed for prevention and intervention? There's a question in the chat about how much time should a student threat assessment take to complete? And there's no textbook answer to that. But it's important that we don't gauge in paralysis by analysis. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have a system set up and a protocol to follow. And that that's engaged as soon as possible. It depends on the type of threat we're talking about. Are we looking at transient threats? Are we looking at information that's shared? Is there an immediate threat? Is it a social media threat? But I think the key thing and it may be underlying the question. Is this a situation where we're going to do as we unfortunately often do in education? Paralysis by analysis through committees and teams. No, we don't want that, but we also don't want one person checking a few boxes. And calling that a threat assessment. I remember a number of years ago out in Colorado, there was a case that actually resulted in changing of state laws. Regarding threat assessment. And I looked at the documents for the reporters who had gotten a hold of some of these threats. And the first glaring gap was that it was filled out by maybe two people, but yet their protocol called for. A five person team with specific positions, psychologist, your administrator, your SROs. It listed who should be on a threat assessment team. And the first thing that caught my eye was it was filled out by two people. There was a quick check through by an administrator rather than and then a threat assessment team. The goal of threat assessment is to have multiple lens, multiple eyes. Looking at the thread and adding to the information and collected in the assessment. Your counselor and psychologist will see something differently than your SRO will see something differently in the school administrator than the teacher. And the key to threat assessment, not to oversimplify it, is to have all those perspectives quickly as possible come together. To give a better picture than just having one person take a look with one piece of the information. What's heightened security? What do we know from heightened security? We know that height, when we heighten security. It really means increased supervision. We're actually working on training, going back to the fundamentals, training. School staff, school administrators on what is supervision? What does that look like? What does it mean? We know that many incidents occur while while some occur in a classroom, many actually occur, if not most in common areas. Student bus drop off and pickup, student hallways and around restroom areas and cafeterias that. Step on student arrival and dismissal and buses at breakfast, at lunch periods. What do we have here? We have common theme here is greater number of student movement and and presence, less adult supervision. So we should be able to have conversations and plans to address supervision rather than sending kids home to remote learning. And kind of throwing in the towel and buying time when there's a threat. We we know that we can heighten security, we we can heighten security in those areas that I just mentioned. Work with our law enforcement to have a greater presence at arrival and dismissal, our SRO presence. Having teachers in the hallway, making supervision, sure supervision points are covered at arrival dismissal. In those places that I mentioned, there are things that we can do and have continuity of school if there is a vague threat that is assessed as. And and not considered a credible threat. Chuck, any quick comments on heightened security?
Well, I do think the point you made about staff visibility is crucial. And one of the things that we've seen in some locations across the country is passing period slash hallway. Before after school supervision being. Removed from teacher responsibilities via teacher contracts. And I'm not going to get into that issue of what should or should not be in a teacher contract. But certainly we know that the visibility and the awareness of staff. And that staff be trained again on what's expected of them during passing period. For example, at the secondary level, too often we hear from teachers that, well. No one told me or no one had an expectation. And particularly since particularly staffing over COVID, you know, check your your. Visibility and your assignment schedule to make sure everyone's in place and they understand that they are in place. And have some of your people, people on your list, are they no longer in your building for one reason or another? And so all this kind of boils down to really the greater the visibility, the greater awareness that teachers have. And other staff and what, you know, we talked a little bit about non verbal. Recognition of behaviors and so forth. We've kind of need to revisit those issues, those training points and points of emphasis. For teachers and all staff. One of our mantras is that all adults are responsible for school safety. And that is never more true than it has is today. Ken?
I'll just one.
I noticed that Ken, for some reason, has. Been silenced momentarily. So let me, let me just pick up on a couple of things until until hopefully Ken gets back with us and.
Parallel plane on this.
Ken, you had a technical glitch in which your screen froze. Thirty to forty five seconds. So we're just talking just just about going back to to threat. Using your threat assessment and your training and making staff aware of of those and talking about non by. Excuse me, non verbal cues for people. And we see this all the time. And as we mentioned in our last session about. Those who have student center activities and responsibilities, cafeterias before, after school. Extracurricular events. When you have supervision watching students and we know based upon experience. How students should behave and to respond to those non verbal cues appropriately. Ken?
Hopefully, hopefully we're back here now. Thanks for picking up there Chuck. The point I was about to make was with COVID focus on COVID plans, many schools have not reconstituted their school crisis teams. Their school threat assessment teams, their school updated their school emergency plans. Many plans are a year to two years outdated in schools without having been reviewed. So we want to make sure you're doing that. We're going to wrap up this section here very quickly. We talked about adult centered threats. We've dealt with threats in schools where a staff member, support staff member had a threat by a domestic partner. Out in the community and the person said they were going to come to the school and and kill that staff member. How do we handle that? We're used to student to student threats. How do we handle adult oriented threats? And we're going to talk about board security type threats here in the next section. There are some reasonable resources out there and different models. Dr. Dewey Cornell has a model on comprehensive threat assessment with a guide. That's a relatively inexpensive resource for schools. By the way, this is being recorded and will be available on demand at our website, schoolsecurity.org to go back. The last piece on this is communicating in a crisis. Again, we stressed that schools need to have not only crisis communications plans. But social media strategies so that when threats are received. Rumors and misinformation spreading, your school communications team, your school communication person or in smaller districts that maybe your superintendent. Can hit the ground running with a plan to have a presence in so on social media so that you're not behind those times. So we need to treat threats seriously, investigate them thoroughly, not automatically evacuate or close schools. And recognize there's a difference between posing a threat versus making a threat. Again, this, there's a lot more information on this, but we want to spend. The next part of our webinar today, talking about the other hot topic, board and administration center security. And we're going to use this sort of as a guide for our our talking points here today. The current school board political context and and threat trends. This issue has accelerated rapidly. There is a localization of national political issues. Two hot topic areas that are bringing parents into school board today are COVID nineteen policies and particular masking policies. In schools, some school communities, not all, we could have with a number of people on here today, we could have. Eighty percent where boards are not currently affecting, we could have this change the next day. Depending on your school community, but there is a political context. There's also a context on school curriculum where parents are challenging. What they're labeling critical race theory. Dealing with diversity, equity, inclusion and other type of issues. I'm not going to drill down in in the specifics of these. But what I want people to understand is the historically mundane school board meetings where in a few, if anybody, other than the one or two. gadflies who always showed up in a school community or their board meetings that are very routine. Some of them now are becoming very charged, very politically charged, very frustrated. And angry parents. At times there are parents who have very legitimate concerns. I'm not saying. I'm not challenging or getting or taking sides here. I'm describing a context. We have a new context where there is. Presence of angry parents, community members for various issues, including those I mentioned, coming to school boards where they did not before. This has been accelerated at the national level. There was a communication from the National School Boards Association to the to the Biden administration. The Justice Department got involved and that has become politicized and only intensified things for local school boards. Now just say this, again, it's not a political statement, but I will say on my end, I would say it's become politicized. But ultimately, you're not going to have federal law enforcement typically at your local school board meeting. It is a school district responsibility along with their local first responders, police, fire, EMS. Sheriff's Department, Police Department to determine security for your events. Don't wait for the great answer from from DC. It's not going to happen, but it is politicized. And it is a situation where, again, we're not used to managing adult to adult threats. And there's some physical security and procedural risk reduction measures we could take and like to take some time where Chuck and I. Can talk about some specific examples of those. Chuck, would you like to start off?
Well, I do think it's important for, you know, over the years, we've seen some resistance. When we have in the past have recommended cameras in boardrooms, cameras outside boardrooms. So that as we use them elsewhere in the school district, there's been some reluctance to put those into the board. I would, I would guess that with what we're seeing around the country that. Some of that old style thinking has disappeared in regards to what physical security may add. But again, with the caution, cameras in the board or room or outside the boardroom are just there. For documentation for future use should something occur. Cameras do not generally prevent violence as we have seen over the years, but they do provide what I call a historic perspective. So I think it is important that people understand, for example, and and I know I may get ahead of you here just a bit, Ken. But I think one of the issues in regards to prevention. Is that board members be trained in appropriate verbal interventions. Oftentimes are board members who are outstanding community representatives. But they've never worked in a situation with managing a crowd or crowd behavior. So to assume that they will know and say things to de escalate is, I think, is is a stretch. So have so many districts have some sort of non verbal de escalation procedures in place. Extend that to your board members. Now hopefully they'll be receptive to that. We're seeing much more interest from board members in in security in regards to what's going on. And this is one means of prevention. The other thing that I would really like to address, Ken, is is communication. Pre event communication. Are there well established and well known rules? In regards to what is going to happen in your board meeting? For example, do you have a an appropriate time for public comments? If so, how do people know that? Oftentimes we have, we may have a printed agenda. And at the end of that agenda, there may be a an agenda point. I would stress that. If you're anticipating that some sort of poster be established. I would stress that if you're anticipating that some sort of poster be established, that people are given an explanation of when they will be allowed to speak. So that it just doesn't appear that they're being cut off or they're ignored. So I think that is an important process in regards to on the scene, if you will. Also, we've seen more and more involvement of of police in response to this. I think it is, it is wise perhaps to have conversation with first responders, with law enforcement. Should you have a need or if you anticipate, have you been made aware, again, using a threat assessment tool in regards to what may happen at a board to have them involved. The other issue that we see is is for there to be a clear understanding of roles, responsibilities and duties. We know that there is is a huge ongoing battle between the local police department and the school board and a large school district here in the country that stems from an issue back in July and a misunderstanding. So don't assume that simply because you know the local police officers, they may be great partners on a day to day basis. That they're going to respond in the same way to a situation in your boardroom. Ken?
I've also talked with some police officers and command staff from here in Ohio and around the country who've said tactfully, but and privately to me. There has to be some boundaries where the school board, the school district recognizes that we, the on duty local law enforcement are not solely responsible for providing security and following the directions given to us in terms of how to respond when there is an incident by the board. And what that told me was that local law enforcement certainly will respond when there is a threat or concern or a series of board meetings. But there also is a concern with them that they do not become the regular security presence on duty. Because they have other areas of responsibility out on the road. Many of our, if not most of our law enforcement agencies are understaffed now. So they just can't pull three cars or four cars off the road to be there just in case unless there's a threat. All this tells us is there needs to be that communication ahead of time. What is the role of local law enforcement? What is their presence? Do you end up hiring off duty if you have your own school police or SROs? Is it a routine expectation that they will assign somebody there? And then, once they're there, what is the expectation? I've seen many cases where law enforcement is present, but they just don't know when to intervene. How loud does a person get? What actions do they take other than the obvious if they're threatening, harming, throwing things, attacking someone? When should law enforcement intervene? And how do you balance that First Amendment right? And and what's the difference between me as a person whose voice raises? And again, it gets into Chuck's example of training your board and your administrators on verbal deescalation and nonviolent crisis intervention techniques. Some people are loud. My voice raises when I become emotional. Am I threatening or am I just emotional? Where's that line? And then, when a person crosses the line of your procedures that you've communicated. What is the cue or or action taken by your board president presumably, who's or whoever's leading the meeting to to tell the officer to intervene? In other words, not leaving it upon that officer's judgment unless there's a clear threat of danger. But if it's one of those questionable things, is there a pre-established protocol where your board president or or person commanding the leading the meeting for the board says, officer, please remove this person from the room. And in being consistent in your enforcement, and if you're a rule, say, you speak for three minutes and you let person A speak for four and a half. And then you cut off the next person who's a little more angry and more personal, a little more bitter, you cut them off ahead of time. People see inequities. There's also, I believe, is the New York State School Boards Association put out a very interesting model statement for introductions to community, parent, community comments at board meetings. And it basically, to summarize, says it lays down the rules and for civility and expectations of conduct. Whether board members are just going to listen. People expect, many parents and community members expect an engagement. And many boards are in the listening mode and establishing that ground, we're not going to engage in a tit for tat upfront. We want civility. We will hear you as a board. We will follow up with administration. As appropriate, we will get back to the community, but we're not going to engage in a tit for tat argument there. So is there some things you can do with those protocols? The other piece is your physical security of of the board meeting and layout of the board meeting itself. Where are you holding these meetings? Are you holding these in in central offices? Routinely, do you spread your board meetings out throughout the community? Are you in a high school auditorium for one meeting? Do you do it in an elementary school at another meeting? Do you always do it in a high school auditorium or middle school auditorium or cafeteria? Where do you hold these meetings? And then assess the physical layout of each site. One of the things that we typically see in board meeting rooms and oftentimes administration centers is that you have the the half moon, the semi circle board meeting and everyone's backs up against the wall. There's no out if there's a threat. You're trapped as a board member. Do you have a like, can you adjust the layout of your room to where you you give your board members a quick exit, if you will, a door behind them rather than pinning people in as one as one physical security example of your layout in a particular room. Chuck talked about access and talked about the whole idea of cameras, just in terms of monitoring, you know, cameras will deter those who are deterrable. They will serve as evidence for those who aren't, but they can deter people and at least who may think of losing their emotional control. They may think twice in that type of situation. We'll also talk about administration center security. As Chuck alluded to early on, as part of our security and emergency planning assessments we do in schools. We typically look at all those school facilities, including support sites. And inevitably, at the administration center, when we talk about access control and and cameras and panic buttons and and communications capabilities. We find that superintendents and boards tell us, well, look, we don't want to look like we're taking care of ourself versus investing resources at the building level with student and staff. So we're just not going to do that. I think that's changed over the years, as Chuck said. But what we often find is even in the even more, number one, there should be some risk reduction measures because administration centers are places of businesses. We do expulsion hearings in many cases. We do hirings and firings, terminations of employees. We have all types of business dynamics and in the corporate world would automatically be in a secured building with a receptionist, a secured access control, access control doors to get into the main areas. For example, we've recommended superintendent offices and other high risk offices not immediately be on the first floor. Where in particularly in your larger school districts where someone can walk right in. And if they get past the reception area, they're right after the head of the organization. The other thing that we've we've recommended in schools is that if you have high traffic there areas such as human resources where people do come and go, you put that on the on the ground level on the front floor, maybe with its own designated access control area. So there's some physical things that we can do, some procedural things that we could do. But one of the more basic things at administration centers, just on a day to day basis, we consistently find that the places that house our central office administrators and support staff are not doing fire drills. They're not doing lockdown drills. They're not doing evacuation drills or have an evacuation plan. They're not doing weather tornado and whether natural disaster drills. So we're finding ironically that the same requirements we have of school buildings in these districts that we work with are not being held at the administration center and support site, site, transportation centers, facilities, locations. So we want our support sites, including administration centers, to practice the same drills, lockdown, fire drills, evacuation of any other site because they're not immune from those same threats that that any of our schools could could take. We learned that really that there's a a value to the training and the tabletop exercises we do. We've got about a couple of minutes here left. If you'll bear with us, we'll we'll wrap up here with another couple of minutes. But training tabletop exercises are one of the best things that that we do. Go through hypothetical scenarios and so often we find that top administrators, superintendent cabinet members, because they're very busy and board members are not always attending those tabletop exercises that we're hired to do with with school districts. And the research that I found in my doctoral program, as well as what we found in practice shows that one of the most valuable things that we can do is have people work through hypothetical scenarios that are structurally designed with specific goals and objectives to meet in a half a day to implement and modify table tops and debrief are one of the most valuable things you could do. It takes the written plans and see to see if the people at the central office, building level and your community partners can work through scenarios because it's that process of working through that really comes to life in a real life situation. So that to test what's on paper or in a computer to see if it actually work in practice. And also your support staff, doing those verbal deescalation, nonviolent crisis intervention. We were, we do a specific training for school transportation personnel, for office support staff, food services, facilities, custodial maintenance, because those staff members are on the front lines and have never been trained in many schools on how to deal with aggressive parents and guardians, angry persons, adults who may pose a potential threat. So there are many things that we can do. Also administrators, taking a look at higher risk context. If you have expulsion hearings, the parent anticipated meetings with angry, anticipated angry parents. How do you, where do you have those meetings at the school? Who's president, present in the room? If you're an administrator meeting with an angry parent, there have been cases where angry parents have brought weapons in with them, have attacked school administrators and security staff. What you, do you have train your administrators, have code words with your, your, is her secretary? Ways that you set up the room, putting the person who's there at a location where the administrator has and adults in the room have a fast exit to the room versus the person who may have a weapon. These are things that are manageable and they're that are trainable. Chuck, do you have any else thing else to say on that? And I'm gonna do a two minute wrap up here overall. Anything on board and administration center security?
Nothing additional, Ken. I think you did a good job.
Alrighty, thank, thank you. Let's do a wrap up, if we will, here. We have spent two hot topics that we've literally could spend half days to a day on just in basic training. But trying to put some meat around this to let people know there are things that you can do. We are seeing an increased amount of school safety litigation, civil litigation. As Chuck said, and as I said at the beginning, understand that that while the facts and merits of every lawsuit against the school district, whether it's an active shooter or rape, sexual assault or other type of case, facts and merits of every case vary. But the common thread across most is that they involve allegations of failures of people, policies, procedures, systems, training, communications, not failures of hardware and products. And we just see schools racing, the quick answer to everything is to throw up a metal detector and more equipment. What we find in our assessments ironically is that in many schools, when we go in, we find that school boards put one shot doses of money into, they get a grant or they put one, one time infusion of money for cameras and technology. And then we go into school doing an assessment several years, years later and have a school principal tell us, yeah, we had twenty four new cameras put in a couple of years ago and right now six of them don't work. I don't have any budget for it here at the building and central office has no budget for repair. So we've set up these false expectations and false realities with equipment. It's how you use the equipment, what it's for and how it supports the human piece of this, that it's the important focus for us to do. Is there a direct relationship? We could debate and question that. Our experience for more than thirty years says that when you reduce the amount of prevention, intervention, security, preparedness and training in school districts on safety, security and emergency planning, you increase your risk for more serious incidents, lawsuits, civil litigation and parent media concerns. It's pretty clear. What's reasonable is creating a culture of reporting. If you see something, say something and train people on what to do, do something. What happens when kids come to adults and staff members? What are they expected to do? It's all staff, student awareness and engagement is important. Our prevention and intervention supports threat assessment teams, training and protocols supplemented by and supported by security assessments and emergency preparedness evaluations, reasonable drills, training, tabletop exercise. It's a lot, but it's something that you have to work at as a strategic plan. And as we say in our consultations with districts, when we give our reports, it's a strategic plan that should be worked on over a period of time. And we need to make sure as school boards and superintendents, central office administrators and security chiefs, I will say, when you do these assessments, make sure that the report's not just done and it's that's in a in a computer or on a shelf somewhere. That there's actually some action taken on it once the report's done. So often we hear that assessments and consultations are done and people don't follow through even on a strategic plan that they could put it in action over five years out. With that, we are about five minutes over, but we thought it was important to squeeze as much in as we possibly could today. We thank each and every one of you for your time, whether you're with us live today or on demand. This will be posted up at schoolsecurity.org and within two business days. At that location, we also have podcasts, a blog and our Facebook and Twitter links that you see here where you can follow incidents across the country that we post, trends, information and new updates. We put as much free information as possible. We certainly would enjoy opportunity to work with your school or school districts as well in your school communities. Our information on our services are there and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Send those to me at ken@schoolsecurity.org. We know it's a lot today. That's by design. We hope to stimulate some thoughts and conversations so that we can go a little bit deeper and be more thoughtful in our actions on this. Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Everyone, thank you for your time. Stay safe and feel free to reach out if we can be assistance.